Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for March seventeenth, otherwise known as St. Patrick's Day. We will begin, as is customary, with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebowed and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did it break any sound barriers on that one here?
No.
And speed records?
Maybe a few traffic laws.
Well, good morning, and first we will begin with, actually, I want to acknowledge Attorney Joseph Farrell from the western part of the county up in Palmyra. But Joe, every year, drops off boutonnières, flowers for different offices, and travels throughout the whole courthouse with a basket of celebrating St. Patrick's Day or acknowledging it. So he does that and has done that for decades, and we want to publicly thank him for that gesture. So now, back to business, and we'll ask any public comment? Anybody? If we want. Not, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of previous meetings. Any additions, additions, or corrections, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those same signs, so move. And now, a report of our treasurer.
Okay, we had receipts on three fifteen and three sixteen of five million, two hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars and sixteen cents. Our total cash was seven million, eight hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Our expenditures this week were five million, eight hundred twenty-three thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. The tax claim, one hundred eleven thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty cents, leaving us a balance of one million, nine hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. We actually did make our first payment for the out-of-bond issue this week.
First payment for?
Through the bond issue for the nine-one-one set.
For the nine-one-one set.
Out of the bond issue. I think we might have something out of capital.
Yeah, you mean we made our first payment, disbursement from the funds?
From the bond funds, yeah.
Yep. It was the, it was the first invoice from the general contractor, right?
Yeah, I assumed that's what it was. I didn't see that, but we had, we knew we had to move it.
I have a second motion to approve of treasurer's report. Motion approved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any questions?
Just one comment.
Yes, sir.
That should win. So you can see the numbers are much higher than they are in typical weeks because this is the time now that the tax points went out. Tax receipts are coming in heavy. They'll be heaviest at the end of April and the end of May, I think, or maybe June. So Sally, as you know, we have a fund reserve. Part of the function of that reserve is that when we have these beginning of the year slow times with not much revenue, we essentially borrow from ourselves rather than a tax anticipation over, which used to be the case. So to date, Sally has moved one point three million from that to cover expenses, but the first thing she'll do is this money comes in is just replenishing, putting it back, and then we'll be able to set aside for payrolls and such. So that's less than other years typically had to, but our payrolls are down because our vacancies are up. So that's one reason.
Brief motion and second. If there's a discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same signs, so move.
Although the, the higher, the bigger than the.
Good morning.
Michelle Smidley, Director of Human Resources. Under personnel transactions, resignations, and terminations, I have a motion to eliminate the casework supervisor one position within the Community Action Partnership Programs Department due to the outsourcing of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which fully funded this position, term date effective March thirty-first, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the caseworker elimination of that position.
Second. It's removed and seconded, that we approve this request from Community Action Partnership. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same signs, so move.
Sarah Gill, Fiscal Assistant, Area Agency on Aging, resignation effective April first. Solidad Silva, Casework Supervisor One, Community Action Partnership, layoff effective March thirty-first. Mary Hague, Secretary C, District Attorney's Office, resignation effective March twenty-fifth. Jessica Lockhart, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the jail, rescind acceptance of employment effective March fourteenth. Jermaine McQueen, Probation Officer Two, Probation Services, resignation effective April first. And Stacy Hoyer, Casual Deputy Sheriff from the Sheriff's Office, resignation effective March twenty-fourth.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded, we approve those transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same signs, so move.
Under changes of status, transfers, and promotions, Dawn Klein, promotion from Fiscal Assistant in Children in Youth Services to Administrative Officer One in Children in Youth Services, one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cents by weekly, effective March twenty-first. Glenn Bressler, promotion from Caseworker One in Children in Youth to Caseworker Two at the rate of one thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents by weekly, effective March twenty-first. No, Aguilera Gonzalez, promotion from Probation Officer One in Probation Services to Probation Officer Two at the rate of two thousand thirty-one dollars and fifty-four cents by weekly, with fifty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents by weekly interpreter pay, effective April third. And Jordan Nichols, transfer from Full-Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office to Probation Officer One at the rate of one thousand seventy-eight dollars and nine cents by weekly, excuse me, one thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and nine cents by weekly, effective March twenty-first.
Make a motion to approve the changes, the statuses, and transfers and promotions.
Second, I'm motion. It's removed and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same signs, so move.
Under other transactions, these are all new hires, Area Agency on Aging would like to hire Lisa Walmer as an Aging Care Manager One trainee at the rate of one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents by weekly, effective April fourth. Building Security would like to hire Kathy Jo Long as a casual part-time door monitor at the rate of ten dollars and seventy-five cents per hour, effective March twenty-first. Clerk of Courts would like to hire Vanessa Cologne as a General Clerk C at the rate of eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-seven cents by weekly, effective March twenty-first. The Commissioner's Office would like to hire Patricia Vincent as Secretary B at the rate of one thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-one cents by weekly, effective April four. President Judge Tillwalk would like to hire Maria Christina Bradham as a docket specialist at the rate of eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seven cents by weekly, effective March twenty-first. President Judge Tillwalk would like to hire Kayla Long as a customer service clerk at the rate of eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seven cents by weekly, effective March twenty-first. President Judge Tillwalk would like to hire Rachel Neumer as a customer service clerk at the rate of eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seven cents by weekly, effective March twenty-first. Then the Renova Center would like to hire Susan Herring as a full-time developmental assistant at the rate of fifteen dollars per hour, effective April four.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded, that we approve those transactions. Any question or comment regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same signs, so move.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all the transactions previously read, plus the following. Orielle Leiva, this is a sign-on bonus, full-time correctional officer at the jail, one-time payment of one thousand dollars for ninety-day sign-on bonus, effective March twenty-fourth.
Second.
It's removed and seconded, that we approve that salary board recommendation. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same signs, so move. Thank you, Michelle. Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, everyone.
Robert, if you'd like to give the introductions, and then proceed in any fashion you wish to.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Bob Dowd, the Director of Department of Emergency Services for Lebanon County. And on my left, I have Jonathan Hanson from MCM Consulting, and Jim McGee from L3 Harris. Several things for you today, but first. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Bob Boyer. Bob Boyer from Boyer Radio, our local radio company. We're here for several things this morning. The first is a contract to upgrade Lebanon County Public Safety Radio System. This is something we've been working on for approximately seven years now. It was part of the budgeting process in the bond issue. We're at the point where the contract is ready to be executed. It is a twelve million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract with L3 Harris. It's exactly what we're budgeting for, about a dollar and five million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars of that was allocated, was out, budgeted for a couple of years. So about half that system cost is going forward. And that was to pay for the subscriber dues. It's an all-digital P-25 radio system, just to give that a little context. That is the current public safety standard. It's the second iteration of that, that's actually efficient. These radios, it's the federal requirement for, for public safety interoperability. This gets us to where we need to be to meet all those requirements. It's designed on thirteen-tower radio system. That will give us ninety-five percent coverage county-wide, with the exclusion zone that we have in order, which is just, it's very difficult to have. Contract includes one thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine actual radios. That number comes from an inventory that we recently completed with all the public safety entities. And the bottom line is, there will be a radio for every first responder in Lebanon County, and it will be regularly maintained, upgraded, and happens.
Can you do any of those responders, just, just name it?
Yeah, so the majority is fire. That's the biggest piece of our first responder, approximately eight hundred of the radios for our first. The rest is police, EMS, and then there are a few smaller entities in our system as well, which is municipal, public works, schools, hospital security, county law enforcement, county entities, probation, prison, pretty much anybody that has a need regularly to communicate with us.
Thank you. I just wanted to take that school.
This contract also includes a refresh of our paging network, which is often thought about as being one of the same, with their two separate radio systems, they just ride the same towers. We are going to upgrade all that equipment and replace it with modern control systems, refresh the antennas. We're not actually replacing the pagers, but there's nothing to change. There's no, there's been no technology change. It also includes some additional interoperability sites. Right now, the first responder coming into Lebanon County from outside of our area doesn't have a way to communicate with us unless they have a Lebanon County proprietary radio. So we make sure we address that moving forward. It doesn't really matter where you're coming from, you'll have a way to communicate with our first responders on the ground through our system. Any questions about systems?
Couple that are just, these are softballs, and I'm just trying to, to, to bring to the surface some of the, some of the planning that goes with these bullet points, but the ninety-five percent coverage, that's done through strategic placement of the towers and studies and so on. What is the industry goal, I guess? Where do you, what do you typically go for? It's around ninety-five, if I recall correctly.
It is ninety-five, ninety-five. Ninety-five percent coverage, ninety-five percent of the time.
Okay, so we're there. And to get, and I'm recalling this from the last time we did this, or to get above ninety-five percent becomes exponentially costly, because now you're, you're building towers to, you know, to hit little, little targets.
Right, right.
Okay.
It's also worth noting that ninety-five percent coverage is at a specific audio standard in three point four, digital audio quality standard. Radios will still work outside of that standard, it just might not be as clear in audio, symbolize what we get right now.
And this includes penetrating buildings and all sorts of things, because, you know, inside of, for example, a jail, or even your new building, or hospitals, that sort of thing?
That's an entirely different conversation. So the ninety-five percent is portable outdoor coverage. Building penetration is very susceptible. A residential structure, which is normally stick-built, we have no issue covering pretty much everywhere you add outdoor coverage. When you get into the buildings with more dense building materials like this, larger building, prison, you have to either put in some sort of in-building computer system, which is what we're talking about with the prison, or you have to switch to a off-system channel, which is the protocol that first responders use on the ground. So if they get to a building where there isn't outdoor coverage, they can change their radio to a channel that does it via our system, allowing them to communicate with us. So either way, we're very working.
The, the radio count, you did that, you spoke a little about that, but are you going with rosters active or active? I think the last time we did it, a number of seats in, in apparatus.
We went through and counted every single seat, every single functional seat in the fire department, which is one that has an air pack, as well as every single writing seat. We also went through and collected rosters from all the fire departments. The number of roster firefighters is slightly lower than the number of seats, and we took that number as the number we're working with, because that will allow us to make sure that every firefighter has a radio, which is more important than empty seat having a radio.
And from this point, from the point at which we distribute radios and pay for this allocation of radios, if a department adds five to their roster, then, and they want to supply it with radios, then that becomes their responsibility for, from, from the first allocation original?
No.
Okay.
No, so this, this quote includes a hundred radio cache that we will use to account for that fluctuation from time to time. So as a department, that's a number.
Okay, so you'll have an inventory of some.
At the same time, when they lose members, those radios come back to us and we allocate it.
Okay, that's a little different than last time.
Right now, the department can still buy their own radios should they want additional caches beyond what we're able to provide. Lots of them want to have radios of just certification, they want to have extra radios that might be there for some sort of special head cache or something like that, but that's on them to do that.
And just a comment to the, to the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan funds, and I'm stating the obvious to you guys, but the reason that this was chosen as one of those allocated pieces is that this benefits through the first responders, pretty much benefits the entire county and all residents, you know, directly or indirectly. So it's, you know, the spirit of the, of the legislation, I think, really, really touches a lot more people than, you know, specific districts.
Anything else before I take questions? Commissioner?
I, it's more of a statement than questions, but I asked the questions ahead of time, and I didn't hear these points edified, so I'd really like to state them. This is a non-proprietary system, and I was impressed, because last time, you could only use one kind of radio, so we can use multiples, if, especially if fire companies would be replacing their own, and they can find a less expensive model that, or gets, does the job, that they can do that. So I was impressed by that. And then the next thing is, everybody says, well, how long are these going to last? And the contract says it's a twenty-one-year life, so that's a pretty good life. And then the last point I wanted to make is that it's important to me with what's going on in the world, that these radios are assembled in the United States of America, so I thought that was important to state.
Couple hour drive from here.
Pardon?
A couple hour drive from here.
Okay.
Rocket from New York.
Yes, sir. It's worthy of me.
And so I'll make a motion to approve the contract for twelve million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the public safety radio system upgrade.
Second. It's removed and seconded. Take any further comment or question from anyone?
Thank you. I was, I was here, how many years ago, James?
Fifteen.
Sixteen. Yeah. So that's how long your, your radio system was?
No, it's eighteen.
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you. I missed you too.
Yeah, me too. I wish you would have. I didn't age, right? But, no, so, thank you for being our customer.
You're welcome.
Okay. Questions?
When, just to Commissioner Litz's point, when, when she says it's a non-proprietary system, does that mean that citizens can go out and buy a radio? And how's, what is that?
Part of, heck, it was nine eleven that triggered the D-25 project, which, so around two thousand and three, is when the first standard came out? Two thousand and three, the first standard, D-25 came out, with the overall goal of promoting interoperability and equipment variety for first responders. That has gone through two evolutions now, into that second phase. It is a standard that if, if you have a D-25 radio, and the system authorizes you, it's still controlled by the county in order for a radio to work on the system. We have to program it, and we have to build an identifier that will allow it to authenticate. But it could be Motorola, sorry, I closed yours. It could be Motorola, it could be Harris. It could be Kenwood, it could be any D-25 Phase Two compliant, CAP certified, which is the federal certification process, radio. So it promotes competition, which is.
If I could expand a little bit, I think your question might be, can someone just go purchase a radio and be tuned into the communication that goes back and forth? And that, I think, was answered by the programming of a radio, which is what gives access to that. Now, there's still broadcasting of dispatch that goes on.
So the direct answer to that is no, you cannot. A scanner will still pick up certain portions of our system, some of it will not be scannable because of power neutrality concerns.
Right. And what is, I understand ninety-five percent coverage, but ninety-five percent of the time, what would prohibit a hundred percent of the time?
Equipment failure.
Okay.
Tornado comes, sort of takes that tower.
Okay.
There's redundancy built in just about every piece of that system. Every, we connect every tower in two different ways, every transmitter, if we can lose a transmitter, not have effect on capacity at the tower sites. There's always going to be the potential for equipment failure.
Another impressive thing that I liked about these radios was that when we purchased them eighteen years ago, we had some trouble inside buildings. I can, I can remember especially inside the Anvil Fire Department with the metal roof and things like that, and the signal didn't transmit, and you had to put in, like, repeaters or whatever they're called. And with these, they have Wi-Fi, so if there's Wi-Fi in the building, you can, and the signal fails, you can revert to Wi-Fi, so I thought that was a really nice feature. So there's a lot of upgrades in these new radios that are impressive.
Yeah, it's, that type of technology is going to continue to evolve. What's nice about these radios is that really, it's a software, it's a practical, so it can be upgraded to support the new standards as they happen.
Nice.
Well, it's, it's mostly the case with public safety, people only realize it's there when they need it. Your work with replacing these radios, problems with getting parts and just timing out in general, it just, you guys are on it, and, you know, it's reassuring to the public that when you explain what you're doing, everyone knows that we're getting the best that the county can provide, so that's, should be reassuring to a hundred and forty-four thousand people in the county that know that the first responders will be properly equipped.
State of their technology to support effective communications from all of us.
Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same signs, so move. I know you, I didn't, I didn't know if they had.
No. All right, the next contract that I have for, or to approve, is one with MCM Consulting, and this is a contract for six hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Six hundred and seventy-one dollars?
Yep, six, sixty-seven, six, seventy-one. And this is to have MCM manage the implementation of this radio system, and any new tower construction or modification has to go along with it. MCM has been a great partner of ours for a long time. They've done excellent work, they're very familiar with our equipment, our systems, and I think this is, they're going to do an excellent job of this. There was some language that, you requested that we add to make it clear that they had to pass any contracts through the Board of Commissioners, which we have this morning.
Which is what we are governed by, in all cases, anyway.
Yes, nothing in this contract should be seen as a legal.
It just clarified the language to me, and that's all. I appreciate the, the upgrade, or the change.
Motion to approve. Motion approved.
And I'll second the motion.
It's removed and seconded, we enter into this contract. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same signs, so move.
Final thing I have is Chindore's request for me to go.
Let me, let me just say first, Bob, this is, this is Chindore number one. This one is relatively small, comprises two different changes that were discovered. Sometimes these are going to be about materials, and sometimes they're going to be about design. Sometimes they're going to be about things that were maybe not discovered or not thought of, and these will ebb and flow. They'll all be brought to you for your approval. Again, the first one, while this one is a, is an extra expense, we're also anticipating them to credit. I think there's one coming on the gas line, look up at some point here, so. That's what I mean by the ebb and flow. We'll see some little costs, some little save. Ideally, it would all wash out by the end of the project, I, nobody can make that promise, but there is a contingency in the project budget for anticipated change orders, which are inevitable, side of the project, the size is a factor, so.
And, you know, the contingency that we built in budget for for this entire project is about two million dollars, so this change order is for thirteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. I'm sure there'll be several, as Jamie said, several, that'll be large, and it's a losing class, but I don't think.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the change order.
Second. It's removed and seconded. Any questions, James?
Just to point out that the one is for spouting changes, to spouting and grouping, I think, and the other is a structural support for partition in the main building.
And, and that's an increase, I think, of thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. I don't know if that was verbalized.
Thirteen, thirteen, four, seven, three.
Do I have the wrong sheet? Was that change?
Fifteen, four, thirty-seven, fifteen.
Fourteen thousand.
Thirteen, thirteen.
Thirteen thousand.
Oh, okay, I had thirteen, and then?
Thirteen, four, three, seven.
Four, three, seven. Okay, on the front page it says one twenty, so I don't know, maybe I have the old version or something.
Yeah, there's an update.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same signs, so move.
That's all that.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So what happens to the radios this afternoon in service?
Jim?
Oh, yeah.
Two years for that major.
Oh, there's Tom. Are you expecting Tom yet?
No.
But you're not.
Mr. Cook. Morning, Commissioner.
It was a pleasure.
It's a pleasure.
Especially since right after midnight, which is St. Patrick's Day, in order being one in double overtime, so that was a good way to start the day.
Always a plug. Good morning again. I'm here this morning to seek your approval to submit our next grant application for the Lebanon Valley Rails to Trails for a project we call LVRT Phase 10A. This is a project out in Union Township that runs from just north of US Route 22 to Pine Tree Road, about a six-tenth of a mile project. We talked to you about this grant application at the workshop two weeks ago. Project has a total cost of $800,000. The grant application would cover half of that from DCNR, $400,000. The other $400,000 would come from the county's share of ARPA funds.
Thank you.
From ARPA funds. So that's the 50-50 match for the project. If you support this grant application, we'll need a resolution signed by Commissioner Litz, and secondarily, we'll need a letter of support, financial commitment letter that Jamie can sign on your behalf. Do you have any questions for me?
Can that, both of those things be done in one motion?
The letter and the.
Love the approval of your signing.
Yeah, no, that, the letter just is a letter that'll go as a result of your commitment. I would only say, I don't know if you covered this, I would do these in the order of ARPA allocation and then the resolution. That way you're putting the money in.
So they are separate?
They are separate, yes.
So the ARPA is a $400,000 request.
And as you'll recall, the workshop last week, there's actually three ARPA components you're requesting in all. This is the first one because the application is due.
Yeah, the grant application is imminent. We have to have this submitted by early April, so the clock's ticking. Thank you, Jamie, for clarifying that.
All right, so the motion would be to approve the $400,000 allocation from ARPA to the rail trail. I'll make that motion.
And I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Are you in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so move.
And then the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second that.
We have a motion to second to approve the resolution to accompany that. Any questions? One favorite, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs, so move.
Thank you so much. And Commissioner Fiddy, you do sign that, Don can email and execute a copy of that to me, and we'll move forward once we get the letter of commitment from Jamie. We have a package together. John Fitzkey will submit this on behalf of you and we, LVRT Inc. And lastly, again, just thanks for your continuing support for all things LVRT. We appreciate it.
You bet.
Well, thanks for consulting, yeah. This is a great partnership.
Yep. You bet.
It's like the Johnny Cash song, "For the rail trail, one piece at a time."
Yeah, that's it. That's it. Again, have a great day, Commissioner.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, then I have a few things to wrap up. First, I have, on behalf of the jail, I have a service agreement to enter into between the County of Lehigh, Department of Corrections, and County of Lebanon. And this is a contract to house youth if the situation presents itself. So the title requires that a youthful inmate shall not be placed in a housing unit in which the youthful inmate will have sight, sound, or physical contact with any adult inmate through the use of a shared day room or other common space, shower area, or sleeping quarters in order to avoid that if it's, I should say this another way, if that is unavoidable at our current facility by some circumstance, we need to have a place to house them. And Lehigh, the board has spoken with her counterpart in Lehigh County, they're willing to enter into that so that we could potentially have someone there. To my knowledge, we haven't had this need, and we don't at the moment, but we could, and she wants to be in a position of being able to take care of that rather than scrambling. So this is a contract, or a service agreement between us and Lehigh County to do that.
Thank you. Jamie, can you explain something to me? On number seven, Roman, number seven A, on page seven, it is, no, wait, it's Roman World 12, I apologize, on page seven. It talks about taxes. What taxes are involved between Lehigh and Lebanon County? I didn't understand how that.
Seven A? Seven A talks about.
Page seven, Roman World 12. That first A talks about taxes.
Must be some language that they just put, that Lehigh puts in to be, for all their agreements, that we are not delinquent on any taxes owed to Lehigh. Maybe that's what they put in.
Do we owe taxes, Lehigh?
No, we wouldn't, we don't owe taxes on it anyway.
Okay, it just didn't make sense why it was in the agreement.
I would guess that they insert that into any agreement so that they're not doing business with someone for those taxes, similar to what we did for the CARES grants. So if someone was delinquent, we weren't allocating the grant to them.
Oh, I get that, but I just didn't know.
I don't think, I think it just doesn't apply because.
Okay, all right. Just extra. All right, um, is it, I just try.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we entered into this agreement between County Jail and Lehigh County. It's between each other. Any questions?
So I was looking at the contract. So it's $150 a day, and Lebanon County has to provide the transportation to and from if the offender needs to be seen in court.
Yep, so there's still our responsibility outside, you know, if there's anything that's needed outside of Lehigh, but to contain, house the person.
So are the, so Commissioner, Warden Litz wants to have this in place as like a backstop?
Yeah, so if, for example, the district attorney decides to charge a minor as an adult, and we'd be incarcerating them in the jail, not being held in a juvenile detention facility or something, which is different, you know, then that's when they're not being tried as an adult. It would be in that case, when someone's being tried as an adult, we are housing them, but we cannot meet those, all of those requirements of Title 37, where outside of sight, sound, you know, all of that, which can be difficult, clearly sound, you know, to be completely isolated, far enough away from the population that you can't see here, or, you know, another adult, an adult can be a challenge. So that's, that would be the circumstances if we have a juvenile being tried as an adult.
Okay.
We do something similar in MHIDEI whereby we have beds reserved at Morrisville, so if and when we need them, they're available. And I see that as a parallel with this contract for the jails, so we're in compliance with the law in case it comes up.
It wouldn't seem, I mean, with the jail population being so low right now, it wouldn't seem like it would be hard to segregate them.
I agree, not right now, because they consolidated, they actually have some wings that are, you know, vacant in order to, because of staffing, we've consolidated. So, yeah, it would seem feasible today to be able to put somebody, you know, at the end of an empty wing and just maintain housing there, but.
Which are a lot of isolated.
But we've, at one time, you know, we've been up, close to 5.5, 5.5, and in that case, it's going to be very difficult.
Yeah, I think it's just to have a policy in place. It's good to rush these up and make sure they're there when you need them. Okay, any further questions? Not in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so move.
Okay, I have requests for exemption from real estate taxes for qualified disabled veterans, and they are Richard Ray Jr. of Light Street, Lebanon, Roy Crowe Jr. of Monarch Circle, Myristown, Jeffrey Goodland of Parliament Drive, Anvil, and Jacqueline Givler of Grant, North Grant Street, Polaris.
I'll make a motion to approve the 100% disabled veterans for real estate tax exemption.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve those tax exemptions for property taxes. Any questions? Are you in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so move.
I have a number of applications for county liquid fuels paid from municipalities for a fixed allocation of funds toward projects that they're conducting in their municipality, the first being from Myristown Borough. Requesting $3,062 for general road maintenance in 2022, of a projected cost of $3,062. South Lebanon Township would like to use their allocation of $11,429 toward the purchase of road salt, presumably for the 22, 23 winter season. Total cost of $34,230. South Lebanon Township would also like to use theirs for purchase of road salt. Their allocation would be $9,463, and the total cost of project, $14,700. Jones Town Borough would like to use theirs for general road maintenance for $1,905, project being the same. And Richland Borough also for general road maintenance, $1,0519, project being the same.
Motion approved.
And I'll second the motion.
I have a motion, and a second to approve the liquid fuels distribution to those named municipalities or townships. Any questions regarding the motion? Are you in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so move.
I have an appointment for the Lebanon County Commission for Women. This would be to appoint Becky Woodhouse to a vacant term that would go through March of 2025, at which time she would be eligible then for a second term. There was a letter of interest that was attached to the, attached to your packet, and this is a recommendation that's come from Maribel Torres, who's the nominee for main chair.
Make a motion to approve the nomination of Becky Woodhouse to the commission for Women.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we make that assignment. And on behalf of the Women's Commission. Any questions regarding the motion? Are you in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so move.
And lastly, I have a proclamation which has been requested by the Pennsylvania Underground Utility Organization for Pennsylvania 811 Safe Digging Month, April 2022, to be recognized in Lebanon County.
Motion approved.
And I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to second to approve proclamation acknowledging Safe Digging Month, so.
Call before you dig.
Who would have thought it? Anyway, I'll favor the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same signs, so move. Okay, who else? Are they good?
I just want one question, either Jamie or Sally. Now that the taxes, the tax bills have gone out and the revenues are starting to, how quickly does that happen? I mean, do they come in fairly quickly?
Oh, yeah. I mean, they went out, let me see, two weeks ago, and last Monday, 8:00, there was someone in the door. I think they got him over the weekend.
They're here at 8:00 the first day, so. But I think, I think that you get a, you get an initial rush, you know, within the first couple of weeks following, then it'll slow a bit in early April, but then at the end of discount, at the end of April, big rush. Then slows down until the end of June, end of flat period, right? April, yeah.
Sally, you still have a fair number of people pay in person.
Oh, yes, we've had many calls. Is the courthouse open? Yeah, we've been for two years. It's like, you know, they just, because of the COVID, they think we're closed yet, and they have to make an appointment. And so we get a lot of calls for that.
So you're never in peril of, you know, getting close to the edge with your fund reserve and, you know.
Not right now, we're not, not that the bills are not, so we're doing good.
You're, will always be, you know, people in this county, they're just, they got that bill, and it's on the kitchen counter, and it's going Monday morning.
That's my mom. And of course, with the mail the way it is today, we get people calling, I didn't get my bill yet. Well, give it another couple days. Sometimes it takes longer than they're used to, but we get a lot of calls about that.
And I'm assuming that there are people at the other end of the spectrum as well.
Oh, yes. They'll come July 1st and say, oh, I took it yesterday, I got tied up, can I still pay the net amount?
They can discount.
I'll wait till July 1st. So we're a little, because if you start doing that, then if you do it for one person, I always felt that you should do it for everybody. Why do we put that pedal on there?
Yeah, that's a little sticky, though.
Well, and you're following the law.
I have, yes.
All right, um, for a motion to adjourn.
Open.
Second.
We moved in second, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance and your input.
Yeah, three, successful, it's a second, and just a few.